Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, July 18th, 2018 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Commissioners, you'll receive the 2019 Manager's Recommended Budget this morning, and so our comments before the meeting will be brief. I've invited Election Commissioner Lehman up here to talk about the early voting and primary election coming up.
Morning, Tabitha.
Good morning, Commissioners. First off, I'd just like to remind everyone that it is 20 days until the primary election, and it is 111 days till the general election. That may seem like a long time, but it does not seem like a long time for us. Yesterday was the voter registration deadline. And just to give you a little bit of information, so for the last, in the last month and a half, our office has processed changes in over 12,000 voter registration records. About 5,400 of those were due to the court order by Judge Robinson. During the same timeframe in 2014, we processed just shy of 8,700 changes in voter registration records, and in 2010, 8,800. Today, we begin mailing ballots for the primary election. In 2010, we sent a total of 6,654 ballots. In 2014, we sent 5,670. And today, we have 6,208 going out with still two weeks to continue mailing ballots. So we expect we will mail more ballots this election than we did in 2010, and we have already mailed more than we did in 2014. June 1st to September 1st is the timeframe when people cannot switch parties if they already belong to a party. That is a question we receive a lot in our office, so I'd like to just touch on that. To date, between June 1st and yesterday, we have sent out 607 denials of party change to people who attempted to change their party that was denied due to that law. In our office, early voting will begin Monday, July 23rd, which is Monday, and our satellite sites will be open August 2nd through the 4th. I would also like to just give a brief reminder to anyone who may be watching this, that the ruling that came down from Judge Robinson affects the voter registration process and the eligibility of certain individuals to vote, but it did not impact or change Kansas law regarding government-issued photo ID requirements at the polling place on Election Day. We have received several questions about that, so I just want to make sure people are clear, you do still have to bring government-issued photo ID when you go to vote. We are still in need of some Democratic election workers, so if you have any friends to recruit, please send them our way. And the last thing I would touch on is that in 2010, we had just shy of 26% voter turnout. In 2014, we had 19% turnout. I would expect we're going to be more along the lines of our 2010 numbers this time around. Would love to actually pass that 30% turnout, but I don't know if we will. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, Commissioner, thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate the update. One of the most important civic responsibilities that every citizen has in the United States is to vote. If you don't vote, don't complain later on.
And I would, I would just, I'm sure that everybody who works in government and probably many other industries are experiencing this, but you know, with the, with the changes that we're seeing in extreme partisanship on all sides of all issues, we are seeing an uptick in phone calls that I would, or people coming into our office that I would say are actually abusive to the staff of my office. So I would just ask people, if you're coming in or you're calling, remember that person answering the phone or at that front desk has nothing to do with the laws, and it's not their fault, and just be respectful, because we've had quite a few very abusive conversations in the last few days. That is hard on staff, so.
Thanks for that. Also, you do have sufficient polling places all lined up?
Yes, we are good to go for the primary election.
Okay, how are we doing for the general?
We are still discussing that.
Do you need any support from us?
We are getting great support right now from the county. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. I don't see any other questions. Thanks for being here this morning.
Additionally, this Saturday, July 21st, Sedgwick County will have a booth at the Sedgwick County Fair out in Sheeney, so come by and say hi to our staff members there. Today, Commissioners, your meeting will consist of some meeting minutes, advisory board resignations and appointments, electronic plan submissions for Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. Like I said, the Manager's 2019 Recommended Budget will be presented, and the publication of maximum property tax levy to fund the 2019 budget will be heard on the regular commission agenda as well as the fire commission, or excuse me, the governing body of Fire District 1 to fund the Fire District budget for 2019. With that, Chairman, I will kick off the meeting, or let you kick off the meeting this morning.
Good, well, thank you, Kate, and thanks for mentioning Sedgwick County Fair. The parade starts tonight at 6:30. After that, I'll go on down to the fair, so I hope that we can see everyone there this evening. Normally, I'd mention that at the end of the meeting, but we're going to be discussing a lot of things, and by then I may forget that important point, so be sure to attend the fair. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order today for Wednesday, July 18th, 2018. Madam Clerk, next item.
invocation to be led by Pastor Michael O'Donnell, Grace Baptist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. Good morning, Father. We thank you for another wonderful day of being able to enjoy your creation. Lord, we ask you forgive us for those times that we don't notice the awesome sunrise, the beautiful sunsets that reflect your creation and your glory. And, Lord, you've given us so much to be thankful for. We are grateful for this community in which we live. Lord, we're grateful for family, and for friends, and for faith. Lord, we appreciate so much the opportunity to be able to pray before a governing body, Lord. We realize that we certainly, as a nation, need your guidance and leadership, Lord. We look at what's going on in the world and the volatility, Lord. We need your protection and your wisdom. Lord, I do pray that you'll be with our county leaders, Lord. We pray that you will be with them and be with Mr. Andrew and Mr. Dennis and Mr. Ranzow and Mr. Howell and my son. Lord, I pray that you will give them wisdom, especially now as they contemplate the budget, Lord. They are stewards of funds that we have, citizens have earned and have put in their trust for utilization to best protect us with our fine fire department, our police, those who work on our streets, those who guide us. Lord, we pray that you'll bless them, be with Attorney Yeast, Lord, as he goes over many of the legal issues that affect this county, and Mr. Scholes as he goes over managing all those people who work here. Lord, we are grateful for them, and as just we heard from Ms. Lehman a moment ago, sometimes people are not very understanding about county employees and are not always as polite as they should be, and, Lord, I pray that you will give wisdom and temperance to those who come in and have issues that they are trying to get to resolve, Lord, and you will also be with the employees, that they'll be patient and help those folks as they go through it. Lord, you've been so good to us, and we are mindful of all the wonderful things that you have, and the celebration-like having a fair and having abilities to join together as a community means a great deal, and so bring us together as a community, Lord. As was mentioned earlier, there's a lot of volatility, and, Lord, we pray that you will just help us understand that we have a responsibility to love one another as you've loved us. So be with us as we go through this day, and we ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor O'Donnell, thank you very much for being here this morning. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Andrew?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. I have three folks that have signed up to speak on the public agenda. First, Greg Thomas.
Did he see him?
How about Steve Logue? Do you want to speak?
Yes, me for a second. My name's Steve Logue, and I'm part of the Cross Winds Aviation, Cook Airfield. I just want to thank you all for letting us be in here today. I was thinking on the way up here, you know, I know the people up at Stearman real well, and we were talking, and they were visiting, and they have a, their county comes to them, and their city comes to them and says, what else can we do to help you all out there? And that's what the attitude, and that attitude would make me feel a lot better if I could have the same, the same thing coming across your panel, that what can we do to help small businesses? And this is what we got in front of you today, will help small businesses, and I appreciate the time, and that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. We have one other individual. We do have an appointment for Shanti Liker. Would you like to speak now or during the appointment portion?
Do me a favor, thank you.
We can do that, thank you. Now, does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on the public agenda this morning? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of June 27, 2018.
Thank you. Commissioners have all had a chance to review the minutes from June 27, 2018, and moved to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Warren Willenberg from the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Code, Standards, and Appeals.
Mr. Chairman Eric Yeost, County Counselor, we can actually combine items B and C together. They're both resignations. Item B is the resignation of Warren Willenberg from the MABCD Board of Code, Standards, and Appeals. He is the current, he is currently the BOCC appointee to the real estate position. We have no replacement for him yet at this point. Item C is the resignation of Tracy Addington from the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the employee position. Ms. Addington is going off the board due to the fact that she has left our employ. We have no replacement yet for her, and I would urge adoption of both of these items.
Thank you. Move to accept the resignation for Warren Willenberg and Tracy Addington.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Warren Willenberg from the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Code, Standards, and Appeals.
Mr. Chairman Eric Yeost, County Counselor, again, item D is a resolution appointing Ms. Shanti Liker to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. She is being recommended for this position by Commissioner Jim Howell to replace Mr. George Theo Harris. Ms. Liker would serve the remainder of that term, which expires May 21st of 2019. She is here and present, I believe, and I would recommend adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that Shanti's a great individual. I spent a fair amount of time speaking with her about this board. In fact, she's been attending this advisory board for quite a long time just because she's interested in the subject matter. She's passionate about the topic, and I think she's got a very good balanced perspective on things need to be done there. So I proudly make a motion this morning to adopt the resolution to appoint Shanti Liker to this position on the animal care board.
Thank you. I'll second that. New discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Warren Willenberg from the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Code, Standards, and Appeals.
Mr. Chairman Eric Yeost, County Counselor, we can actually combine items B and C together. They're both resignations. Item B is the resignation of Warren Willenberg from the MABCD Board of Code, Standards, and Appeals. He is the current, he is currently the BOCC appointee to the real estate position. We have no replacement for him yet at this point. Item C is the resignation of Tracy Addington from the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the employee position. Ms. Addington is going off the board due to the fact that she has left our employ. We have no replacement yet for her, and I would urge adoption of both of these items.
Thank you. Move to accept the resignation for Warren Willenberg and Tracy Addington.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Shanti Liker to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman Eric Yeost, County Counselor, again, item D is a resolution appointing Ms. Shanti Liker to the Animal Care Advisory Board. She is being recommended for this position by Commissioner Jim Howell to replace Mr. George Theo Harris. Ms. Liker would serve the remainder of that term, which expires May 21st of 2019. She is here and present, I believe, and I would recommend adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that Shanti's a great individual. I spent a fair amount of time speaking with her about this board. In fact, she's been attending this advisory board for quite a long time just because she's interested in the subject matter. She's passionate about the topic, and I think she's got a very good balanced perspective on things need to be done there. So I proudly make a motion this morning to adopt the resolution to appoint Shanti Liker to this position on the animal care board.
Thank you. I'll second that. New discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Shanti Liker to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman Eric Yeost, County Counselor, again, item D is a resolution appointing Ms. Shanti Liker to the Sedgwick County Fire Code Board of Appeals. Mr. Chairman Eric Yeost, County Counselor, item E is a resolution reappointing a number of individuals to the Sedgwick County Fire Code Board of Appeals in a number of different positions, which are more fully described in the resolution. The individuals being appointed or reappointed are Mr. Greg Willhite, Ray Frederick, Randall Coonrod, Tim LeBlanc, Duane Schneider, and Christine Brunner. There are a couple of those folks who are present to be sworn, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Yeost. Move to approve and adopt the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
And is the clerk ready to swear some folks in?
I believe she, we weren't aware that there were, sir, we weren't aware that there were going to be some available today. We were told that there wasn't, they weren't going to be here, so let me text.
Very good. Well, you won't be sworn at this moment, but if any of you would like to speak, you're welcome to speak. Mr. Frederick?
Oh, oh, there she is.
And we have the clerk back, too, so you may get sworn in.
Well, I'm used to being sworn out, that's for sure. Certainly, I don't want to miss an opportunity to say thank you for the good work that you do and the sacrifices you make as Commissioners to our county, our community, and the region, so it's an honor to certainly have an opportunity to serve in this position, and thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Frederick, if you'll stay up there, we'll swear you in. And make sure that we have everyone there.
Okay, just like everyone, I'll read through the other side. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Fire Code Board of Appeals, so help me God.
I do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could we have them identify who has been sworn in?
Yeah, please. Can we have the names of the individuals that we swore in today for the record?
Maybe not. It's Greg Willhite, Ray Frederick, and Christine Brunner.
That's probably Ms. Brunner and Mr. Willhite, and Mr. Frederick.
Very good.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Wagner. The members that were sworn in were Greg Willhite, Ray Fredericks, Randall Coonrod, Tim LeBlanc, Duane Schneider, and Christine Brunner are the people that will be sitting on the appeals board.
And those were the ones that were approved. We only had three that we swore in.
Right, Christine Brunner, Randy Willhite, and Randall Coonrod.
Greg Willhite. Or Ray Frederick.
Greg Willhite, I'm sorry.
Very good. Well, again, thank you for your service. I know we pay you an awful lot to do that job. We do appreciate your service to our community. Madam Clerk, before we go into new business, I'm going to ask Commissioner Howell to make a statement.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion in just a moment for an off agenda item. We've been working on the discussion that we had last week regarding the potential paving of a half-mile around the south end of Cook Airfield for the, I think our perspective is we'd like to see a K-State Polytechnic school go in, and that's our interest. And to make that happen, we, the partners, the partners there have worked together, and paving that half-mile is going to be necessary to make that whole thing come to fruition. So I'd like to revisit that, and just want to make an off agenda item, reconsider that item from last week, and dispense with that business today.
Do you have a motion?
That's the motion. I make a motion, we take an off agenda item this morning to consider, reconsider the half-mile paving around the south end of Cook Airfield. Second discussion.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
And is the clerk ready to swear some folks in?
I believe she, we weren't aware that there were, sir, we weren't aware that there were going to be some available today. We were told that there wasn't, they weren't going to be here, so let me text.
Very good. Well, you won't be sworn at this moment, but if any of you would like to speak, you're welcome to speak. Mr. Frederick?
Oh, oh, there she is.
And we have the clerk back, too, so you may get sworn in.
Well, I'm used to being sworn out, that's for sure. Certainly, I don't want to miss an opportunity to say thank you for the good work that you do and the sacrifices you make as Commissioners to our county, our community, and the region, so it's an honor to certainly have an opportunity to serve in this position, and thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Frederick, if you'll stay up there, we'll swear you in. And make sure that we have everyone there.
Okay, just like everyone, I'll read through the other side. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Fire Code Board of Appeals, so help me God.
I do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could we have them identify who has been sworn in?
Yeah, please. Can we have the names of the individuals that we swore in today for the record?
Maybe not. It's Greg Willhite, Ray Frederick, and Christine Brunner.
That's probably Ms. Brunner and Mr. Willhite, and Mr. Frederick.
Very good.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Wagner. The members that were sworn in were Greg Willhite, Ray Fredericks, Randall Coonrod, Tim LeBlanc, Duane Schneider, and Christine Brunner are the people that will be sitting on the appeals board.
And those were the ones that were approved. We only had three that we swore in.
Right, Christine Brunner, Randy Willhite, and Randall Coonrod.
Greg Willhite. Or Ray Frederick.
Greg Willhite, I'm sorry.
Very good. Well, again, thank you for your service. I know we pay you an awful lot to do that job. We do appreciate your service to our community. Madam Clerk, before we go into new business, I'm going to ask Commissioner Howell to make a statement.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion in just a moment for an off agenda item. We've been working on the discussion that we had last week regarding the potential paving of a half-mile around the south end of Cook Airfield for the, I think our perspective is we'd like to see a K-State Polytechnic school go in, and that's our interest. And to make that happen, we, the partners, the partners there have worked together, and paving that half-mile is going to be necessary to make that whole thing come to fruition. So I'd like to revisit that, and just want to make an off agenda item, reconsider that item from last week, and dispense with that business today.
Do you have a motion?
That's the motion. I make a motion, we take an off agenda item this morning to consider, reconsider the half-mile paving around the south end of Cook Airfield.
Second discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Brent.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brent Shelton with the Division of Finance. To briefly refresh the item that was deferred last week, you voted to defer an amendment to the capital improvement program for the paving of the 73rd Street Loop in southeast Sedgwick County. This is adjacent to Cook Airfield. Since the paving request is to facilitate cementedated increased access to Cook Airfield as a result of agreements with Kansas State University to provide, to construct a facility and provide unmanned aircraft systems, education, and laboratory training, protection was sought for the county's expenditure in the event that that proposed development did not occur. So the item before you now would be to approve the amendment to the CIP program R342 to provide for the paving, basically, of 73rd Street South, which is about a quarter of a mile, as you can see here, and then 139th Street East to the west side of Cook Airfield. The estimated cost of that is at approximately $70,000 to $73,000, and paving would be contingent upon a memorandum of understanding between Sedgwick County and Cook Airfield, and that would be the next item for your consideration presented by the Counselor's Office. With that, I will stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Seeing none?
Is there anybody else who needs to speak before a motion is made?
We need to have some discussion during the, during the motion. Do you want to make a motion at this time?
Well, I have a number of things I'd like to say. I just wanted to, I guess, reintroduce this once again and articulate some reasons why I think this is necessary this morning, and I would like to do that and then make a motion, but I'm not sure if there's anybody else who needs to speak before I get into that, so just want to make sure.
I think Legal was going to speak.
I'm sorry, that's why, okay.
Will, Will Dear, would you like to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners. Will Dear, Assistant County Counselor. I'm here just to present the MOU, which I think is technically the next item, but the MOU, I believe you've all been given a copy of, and this just outlines the agreement between Cook Airfield and Sedgwick County on the paving of that portion of road, and that K-State Polytech is going to conduct, if they're, actually, Cook Airfield is going to construct a facility out there that'll be leased to K-State for this educational facility.
Any questions for Mr. Deers? Seeing none? Thank you. Mr. Howell?
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So some of the concerns last week were basically protection to the county. Should we expend the dollars to pave this road, and then, for some reason, the deal falls apart? What would be the clawback? And so that, this MOU has been revised to make that very clear. The responsibility to construct that building and to do, to accept that grant and provide that building space and do the lease with K-State is clarified in this document. That's all required for this paving, and should any of those things not happen, this includes a clawback up to 70, it says approximately $73,000, but for whatever the cost of the
Even though we took an off agenda item and combined them on that vote, I'd like to have two separate vote call votes on this.
Okay. Does the order of that matter? Does the MOU need to be first?
No. But, I think the CIP might be appropriate to take up first, but it's up.
Okay. So, we'd like to, I need to amend the CIP to include the half mile as described in that resolution.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we would amend the CIP this year to include this half mile of paving as described in the MOU with Cook Airfield.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. Commissioner Howell said in his motion, or in his discussion, that K-State would not come without this road. Is that, is that true?
Let me, sir, let me clarify. This, you know, I think originally, Butler County was part of this, and we initially talked about this about six months ago. This was a package deal. Everybody agreed this road needed to be paved, and I've had discussions with the schools when they were there, and I think that was clear at the time that this was something that needed to happen for this school to come in. And since then, Butler County has moved away. I'm not sure exactly who felt that was absolutely required at the time. I'll tell you, I've got an email here that I can read. Certainly, K-State wants the road paved, they would desire the road to be paved, but would they come in without the road being paved? The answer is yes.
Okay.
The problem is, let me finish though, please. The problem is that Cook Airfield would not be interested in providing this space. And here's the reason why. Their break even point is down the road quite a ways. They have got a lot of responsibility and a lot of obligation. They're providing land and space, they have a lot of responsibilities towards providing this area for the school. And their interest, of course, I think is less to do with the school, and more to do with other factors around the area, but together, it was very interesting to them, and they want the whole package. But, you take this road away, and they lose a lot of their interest, because, I mean, it'd be nice to have a school, but it's the package deal is interesting to them. So, it takes both partners to agree. Although K-State may be willing to come, they would prefer to have the road paved, but the question is, is Cook Airfield willing to provide the space without the road being paved? The answer is no. And they made that very clear. They sent us an email, a letter that clarified that, and I have an email from K-State saying they would like to have the road paved, and in fact, it was their understanding that the road would be paved, and they didn't want to, let me read the email. I have it right here. Let me remind you, I have a letter from WSU that said they agreed to this, and, I've got to find the email here. Okay, here it is. It says, this is from K-State. Dr. Terry Gatter, the Director, School of Integrated Studies, K-State, University of Polytechnic campus. It says, "I'm not sure where the comment about K-State that they did not need the road paved came from. When she visited with Brent Shelton, she shared the classes would begin, offered the fall of 2019 at Cook Airfield to allow for time for construction of the building." Let me insert my own comment. It was her understanding that the road would be paved, and she felt that that was needed. She said that here in this email, "But that would give time for the paving not needed immediately for this fall. I hope that wasn't interpreted as meaning it was not needed." So, I guess the way I'd say it is, from her perspective, it was needed. There's not a, there's not a contract saying that it's absolutely, they would actually pull out if the road was not paved. However, Cook Airfield is not a willing partner, so it's going to require the paving to make this package go forward. And that's the point I'm trying to make. I believe that they're telling the truth, that should we pave the $70,000 gravel road, we've got a new school in Sedgwick County. If we do not pave it, it will not be in Sedgwick County. And that's made clear. I got another letter from Cook Airfield that's made that very clear. They stated it pretty much exactly like I just said there. So, I'll just tell you, I think our choice this morning is to pave it and have a school, or not pave, not have a school. So, that's real, that's where we're at right now.
Commissioner Unruh?
Commissioner, I still have the four?
Yes.
So, the question was, did K-State say they would or would not come? And we've had different answers to that, so that was why my question for clarification was made. And so, the answer, I guess, is K-State will come with or without an improved road, but the fellows that run Cook Airfield will not proceed with the project without a paved road. Is that the way I interpret the response to the question?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So, it's not, it's not a condition of K-State, it's a condition of Cook Airfield folks. Okay. At least I understand it now, because it's been a moving target a little bit on that issue. My second question is, originally, we were told that Butler would provide Gen Ed classes, and then we were told they're not a partner in not applying Gen Ed classes. Is K-State apply, or providing, I said, providing is the word I meant, is K-State providing the Gen Ed classes then, for this certificate?
Mr. Thomas can answer that question if you would like.
Greg Thomas with Crosswinds Aviation. Butler Community College provides the Gen Ed classes over in Rose Hill Campus in Butler County, which is two miles away. And then, those kids, and kids from Derby and Mulvane, because there's more than just Rose Hill kids that attend these two plus two classes, then they can drive over to Cook Airfield for the K-State labs and classes. K-State will be delivering eight classes on Cook Airfield in their facility.
Okay.
To start out, I mean, classes start this fall in Butler County, fall of 2018, and the first one is Intro to Aviation. And then, the first class that could possibly be on Cook Airfield would be in January 2019, but the facility won't be in place at that time. We've got a goal of having it ready for summer semester, which would be May and August at the latest, so they're for sure ready for the fall of 2019. So, then...
So, the kind of answer to the question is Butler County is part of this effort?
Yes.
And the classes just won't be provided on Sedgwick County soil, but Butler County's providing the Gen Ed classes?
Yes, but there are Gen Ed classes that Butler provides for all their two plus two programs.
Sure, sure. I understand.
Yeah. And they're also, I mean, they also provide classes at McConnell Air Force Base too.
Yes, yes, they do.
Yeah.
Well, we, you know, the reason that's a question is that, you know, several members of this commission have said, as members of the Board of Directors of WATC, and the way that tech colleges and community colleges operate, they're pretty protective of another community colleges encroaching in their geographic area. And I think that we have a certain fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we uphold our partner that we, you know, provide substantial financial resources to, that we protect their interest. Now, I understand that technically, Butler's not providing classes in Sedgwick County.
Negative. And there's also an agreement with Cali County Community College, too, for K-State to provide these aviation classes specific for the unmanned aircraft training.
And that is in Cali County, or does that be on your property?
It could be, I mean, it, all that hasn't been ironed out yet, but some of that could be on our property, because a lot of, you know, Cali County has a campus in Mulvane, which is close, not too far, I mean, it's 10 miles down the road.
Is it, it's in Cali County, though, is it?
It's in Sumner County.
Sumner County?
Yeah.
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry. But, it's not in Sedgwick County?
It's very similar, it's just across the county line.
Yeah, and I, you know, Butler County has a whole campus right on Andover Road out there, which is essentially, you know, on the county line, mile away. But, I mean, I just think we have to be sensitive to the entity in our county that we, you know, have significant investment in, and their desires to protect their Gen Ed population in our county, so...
And that's my understanding why K-State went directly to WSU, got WSU to sign off on K-State being able to deliver the eight specific aircraft, unmanned aircraft training classes.
Yeah.
And that's all that's allowed to be delivered in Sedgwick County.
Right, right. And I'm just speaking to the Gen Ed question, so...
Okay.
Okay. So, Butler is involved in this, in this effort. I guess my biggest thought about the construction of the road is, and I don't have another question for you, so, my biggest thought about the construction of the road, and maybe our Director of Public Work can help me, my experience, just layman's observation, every time that we have constructed a road near a new construction site, the road gets, I don't know, destroyed, too strong a road, but it really gets beat up, torn up, and significantly damaged. So, I think that we're going to build this road, and we'll end up going back there another year and having to do major repair on it. Now, I heard, I heard the presentation, or maybe heard Greg say that, somebody said we're going to have the trucks come in from a different route. Well, I don't know that that happens in practice. I mean, they'll, they say, I got a legal load and I'm on a legal road, and I got a right to drive it, and they probably don't want to drive that 71st Street to the west because it's, it's not a very good road. So, anyway, I'm just concerned about having to redo the road in a year. So, that's, right now, Mr. Chairman, that's all my comments, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Ranza?
I have a follow-up question about the general, Gen Ed class.
I'd like to speak on that today. Again, my name's Steve Logan from Cook Airfield. I got a degree in structural technology from the Air Force. I build roads and things all over the world, and runways. What you're concerned about, the concrete trucks that come in for that project right now today, come in on 71st Street and come up the backside. We just got through building a brand-new hangar in all of our concrete trucks. If we're not going to provide a road that can't withstand a concrete truck driving over it, which they won't be anyway, we're doing the wrong thing. Farmers drive on the roads all the time. This road will be substantial. The base that we built for you out there on that dirt road will withstand anything that you can carry on any vehicle, and it's not going to tear your road up. It's not going to do anything more than just the normal wear and tear of that road, because that base is, you know, we constructed that base heavier than any other road. You ask for a Cadillac, and we built you a Cadillac down there on that road. It's the hardest paved surface I've ever seen in this whole county. So, to give you that, I assure you, you're not going to tear up no road with light construction. This building is not a major construction building. I mean, this is just a schoolhouse. Nothing, nothing more than the buildings that we built out there. We just finished up one, the concrete on that project, two days ago, in a rainstorm. So, we're not tearing up the roads. Our concrete plant that we use comes in from over on hydraulic, comes right on 70, down 127th, over on 71st Street and up the backside, that's where this is at. So, they won't even touch the new road right there coming in on that construction project. Can I keep your farmers and stuff off of it? No, I don't think we need to. The road will hold up to that. That's all it got. Any questions on that?
No, but I have questions on the Gen Ed classes.
I do want to add thing on the classes. All colleges and all schools can send people to that place right there. Even you're wanting, you're saying you want to protect, they could even send students down there that would want further education. Any students can go to that school that we're putting in from any place. So, that's what I wanted to just add that.
Sure.
These general education classes that are being provided in Rose Hill, are they, are they ongoing now?
Oh, yes, sir. They've been ongoing for years.
They've been pre-existing for other programs, so this isn't something, the Gen Ed classes that are going on in Butler County aren't just happening because of this. They'll go on regardless, right?
Oh, yes, yeah. I mean, high school students have already enrolled, and you got high school students that graduate Rose Hill with a high school diploma and a two-year degree.
So, any competition that may or may not be there, have been pre-existing and will continue?
Yes, sir.
But, this, as he just said, having this flight school there would allow people from a variety of schools to include WSU and WSU Tech to attend those classes.
Yes, sir. And beyond that, I mean, it takes us into the next generation of aviation, and that's what, that's what it's about, I mean...
That sounds fantastic. To me, it sounds like a win-win for everybody, exactly the sort of thing we want to look for. And I, and you're right about supporting small businesses. I think we need to do that more in Sedgwick County. I think we've kind of lost the focus away from the, from the small businesses to create 70, 80% of our jobs, and I think this is next an opportunity to support those small businesses and let people know we're serious about economic development.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other comments, or we vote? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Just a comment, 143rd Street has grain trucks, concrete trucks, garbage trucks that go down it now. I believe that's true. I think garbage trucks actually are heavier, and they're single, I think they're single axle. So, in terms of where and how on our streets, we don't have any prohibitions. They're allowed to go down those streets, and they do now. So, we're asking, I should say, that Crosswinds Aviation is going to request their contractors take this other route. I think if those contractors want those jobs, they'll agree to that. So, I think this is, this is about as good as it gets in terms of delaying this road. It's not going to be the same price. We can't really delay this, and so, we can protect the road, and it'll go in, it'll handle whatever goes on it, but we can push that traffic on to other roads during construction. But, down the road, when this is all complete, when they're building many other structures in the area, I don't know that we can control what roads they take at that time. Right now, they could take 143rd Street, and they do already, and that's a cold mixed road, and we've had to maintain that. I went out there, and it's in tremendously good shape. So, I'm not worried about the road. I would also say that, again, the Butler County Community College is doing, as Commissioner Ranza said, they're already doing what they're doing in Rose Hill, but this Polytechnic School, if it doesn't go in Sedgwick County, it's going to go somewhere else. And I've heard, potentially Augusta, I've heard Rose Hill and Andover, I don't know where they're, where they would go, but it would be someplace outside Sedgwick County. It's still going to happen. So, really, our question is, do we want this portion of the school in Sedgwick County or not? That's really the question. They're going to offer the training somewhere. I don't, I don't think that the Butler County Community College has any real impact on whether this training's going to happen and whether Sedgwick County citizens might access that program wherever it happens to be. So, if they want to go there, that's what they're going to do. I think I had a couple of other points, but I already forgot about them, so let's just go ahead and vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify my comments, which I think were a little misunderstood, I realize Butler County's been in business a long time and provides Gen Ed classes forever. It's just who the partnerships are with, and whether they're with our in-county institutions, or whether we make partnerships like this with out-of-county institutions. And so, that was, that was my point of my question. A second thing, on those roads, I realize that roads are used by all types of vehicles after they're built, but I have, and I think we all can say that we've had experience with along 53rd Street on the north side of Bel Air where roads were put in, and construction occurred subsequent to that, and specifically with Northeast High School, and that road got torn up terribly bad. Now, maybe the foundation wasn't as good, maybe this foundation is a better, you know, will stand that traffic better, but it's, it's a concern I had from personal observation, and I don't think it's a ludicrous question to pose.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I've got a couple of things that I'd like to clarify, and a couple of statements. First of all, Mr. Spears, is 143rd a cold mixed road?
143rd is a cold mixed road.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, what I'd like to say is that I've been disappointed in the way that we got to the point we're at today. We haven't had Echo Divo development that ran the course that this is run, and I sincerely support small businesses and economic development. I've told, said that a number of times. It's just that this got to this point today based on a lot of promises rather than any kind of agreements. We heard a lot of different things come about. We've heard that K-State required this. Now, we find out K-State doesn't require it. We've heard that Butler isn't involved at all, and now we find out Butler's involved in it. We didn't get an MOU signed until this morning, and I was handed it to me just as the meeting was starting, so I haven't really had a chance to even read through the MOU. That's not the way that we do business. It's not the way that we do economic development. Another point that I'd like to make is, first of all, we have a very large fiduciary responsibility to WSU and WSU Tech. We put $12 million of Sedgwick County taxpayers' money into WSU and WSU Tech, a huge fiduciary responsibility. I would have rather they partnered, K-State partnered with WSU and WSU Tech to provide these Gen Ed courses, because that's where we're providing our money today, is we're providing it to WSU and WSU Tech, not Butler, not county, not Cali, not some other area. So, I think that that $12 million speaks a lot. I mentioned it before about changes in what we've heard off and on. There's been a lack of truth on K-State requirements and Butler requirements from the beginning, and we're finally now, I hope, I hope, we now know the truth. The final point that I'd like to make is that I am concerned about tearing up this road during construction. I know I was told that in the MOU, that they say we're going to suggest that trucks don't drive on this newly paved road. Well, a truck driver can drive, and he'll tell you that I can drive on any road in the state, as long as I have a legal road, a legal load. So, making a suggestion to a truck driver is just kind of a suggestion. I told Commissioner Howell yesterday that I'd support this if we could not build this road twice. I sat in his office and told him I would vote for this if we didn't spend taxpayers' money to build this road and then have the chance to tear it up and have to build it again. I thought that we were going to have a motion today that we approved this, and with the stipulation that we don't build the road until the hangar's finished. That's what I was hoping that we'd see. That's what I thought we had an agreement when I talked to Commissioner Howell yesterday, and I told him, and I'll be honest, I follow up with what I'll do, I told him I'd vote for it if we did that. I can't vote for it, because that's not what the agreement came out. So, I will be voting in opposition, even though I would love to see something happen, and I'd love to see something happen between the Cook Airport and WSU and WSU Tech. Mr. Howell?
Thank you. I'd like to follow up and clarify a couple of things. First of all, I think the heaviest thing that... First of all, I think the heaviest thing that might go to this location for construction will be the actual concrete trucks. I think there's like 15 or 16 concrete trucks worth of concrete that needs to be delivered to the site. So that's not, there's a lot of other projects out there that have a lot more trucks than that that travel on our coal-mixed roads. So everything else that would be delivered to that site would be less weight. And I did talk to Director of Public Works yesterday, David Spears, and we had a good conversation about this. And Mr. Spears, if you have any comments about the concerns of the road being torn up during this construction because of this type of weight going across that road, I'd love to hear from you. And then I have another comment after that.
David Spears, Director of Public Works, Assistant County Manager. Hate to get in the middle of this debate, but I mean, we've seen roads tore up by, I mean, it's a fact that heavy truck traffic, depending on however they are, how heavy they are and the number of trucks can tear up a road. I mean, but it also depends on how the road is built, the types of road. Coal-mixed roads are very susceptible to this. So, you know, I don't think I can sit here today and tell you the road won't be tore up. I can't. It may or may not. It just depends on the type of traffic that's on it. And this is what we do for a living. You can already see some bad spots on 143rd that we have fixed this year. And I think you know about those, Commissioner Howell. So I don't think that anybody in this room can say with certainty what's going to happen to that road.
Can you, another further question. Can you talk about, is pushing this back to, say, sometime early next year, let's say, January, February, March, is this price going to work to pave that road in that timeframe?
No, I can't guarantee that. I doubt you would get the same price. In fact, we've got it worked up. We got the change order signed by the contractor in case this does get approved because we'd have to go to bid board tomorrow. So you could approve that next Wednesday. And the final price is $60,131.66. That's today. And I can pretty much tell you that next spring, we get a whole new set of prices. You don't know what the price of oil is going to be, but more than likely, it would be more than that number.
Well, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but when I originally started working on this project, we got estimates just to pave this road as an independent project. And I think the numbers, is anybody, Mr. Spears, do you know those numbers? I'm trying to remember. I think it was over $200,000 for this half mile. Do you remember that?
Yes, that's if you wanted the full meal deal and, as we call it, and going back to hot mix and thicker pavement and, you know...
Yeah, no, I didn't want that type of a road, but tried to find ways to reduce the price and it was significantly higher than 60 or $73,000. So again, if there's a way to push this back and maintain pricing, I believe I talked with Cook Airfield yesterday, they're fine with that. As long as this thing is, again, I don't know if this MOU solves this because it's not written with this in mind. I talked with Public Works yesterday, I talked with Legal yesterday, I talked with Crossman yesterday. And so we did the best we could to allay the concerns of damaging this road. The problem is, by pushing this road back, we're not sure we get the same pricing. And if it's possible for us to commit to paving this road regardless of the cost, I suppose, as long as they have a guarantee that we're not going to back out of this somehow, they're willing to go forward. But you have to put yourself in their shoes for just a minute. Are they willing to put their risk out there, take on all this responsibility and then have, for some reason, the county not fulfill their end? We don't have a document in front of us that obligates us in some way that makes that clear. I tried to make that happen yesterday. I was assured that this road would not be damaged during construction. That's not going to happen. We have language in the MOU to make that clear. And even if they did travel on this road, it can handle 15 concrete trucks. It's not going to hurt this road. I just think this is another unnecessary delay. But if we can find a way to ward this in such a way to absolutely guarantee Cook Airfield so they can take on that risk that we're actually going to follow through and pave this road and we're not going to back out of it, that's fine. But that wasn't something I was encouraged to do yesterday because the pricing is not known. Again, all I've got right now is data from when I talked about this as a single project, it was significantly more expensive, I'm going to say around $200,000. And so that doesn't seem like an option. In order to get the unit pricing, the contractors are either going to do seven miles or seven and a half miles. And that's why we're getting this priced down to $60,000. And we can manage the risk to the road. If we're going to push this back, do we have another week to rewrite the MOU and to do it the way, again, I tried, by the way, in terms of delivering the MOU this morning. We had, I don't know how many iterations of the MOU, quite a few. And I thank you, Mr. Dear, for all your work on this because it's been difficult to find language that is acceptable to everybody and to get all the right elements in there. I appreciate all your good work on this. But do we have another week, Mr. Spears or Mr. Manager, to push this back a week?
David Spears, again, this is it. Today is it. No more time.
So either we vote for it today and then if we don't vote for it today, we don't know where we're at at this point. Maybe we'll pave it next year, maybe we won't. Then I don't know what they do. So again, I think we've done all we can do to protect the county. We've got clawbacks in place. We've got language in place to protect the damage to the road. I don't know what else we can do at this point with the timeline we've got in front of us. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I would want to state plainly that if the commission agrees to build a road this year or next year, we will build the road. I mean, I just can't imagine on this type of project, the commission would change their mind, say, no, we promised we'd do it and now we're not going to do it. So we can do it, pass this today, or we could say it's good stewardship to wait until the construction is done and not have to do the road or do significant repair, at least on the road, after construction completed. As the Public Works Director said, it will cause some damage. The question is how much damage. And I have seen roads next to construction site where we put them in. And my prime example is 53rd Street up by Northeast High School. So I would, in spite, I would like to vote for the road and help provide this solution to traffic down at the airfield. But I would like to be voting for it after the construction is completed or vote for it now with the contractual obligation that we'll do it after construction is completed. I suppose an alternative thing would be try to close the road. And Mr. Spears, can we just put it down and then close it till construction is over? Because they said they weren't going to use it.
I suppose you could. That's not really a thing that we usually do. It's a public road and it's open.
I know. And I don't think that's a good solution. We need to leave the road open until we're ready to pave it and then we ought to use it for normal traffic, which includes some ag implements, I understand that. And I would vote in favor of this even though I find it somewhat of a challenge to my rationale to support it in light of the fact that we have a good institution in Sedgwick County that could provide the Gen Ed classes and they're not included in this solution. But my understanding is the agreement with K-State is a two-year agreement. And so I'm sure that that's not going to destroy WSU Tech or anything in that length of time. So they can be working on their partnerships with K-State in the meantime and they'll, you know, they'll go ahead for that two-year agreement. So, all that being said, my bottom line is I'd be happy to support this if we could delay the construction of the road until the construction of the facilities are all complete.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. As I'm reading the MOU, and by the way, it's not hard to read. It's not very long. I could read the whole thing in about two minutes. So in terms of reviewing this and having time to review it, I think we've had time. But here's the point, is there's no timeline or order of operation in this MOU. You could build the building and then construct the road under the MOU that's in front of us. But this would obligate the county to build the road. And it's estimate on the costs. So the costs that they change, I guess they change, but there's nothing in here that says you have to build the road first or immediately and then construct the building. It does say you're going to construct, we're going to pave a road and they're going to construct a building. The order of operations can be reversed. There's nothing in here that stipulates it's got to be road first, building second. So again, signing, the MOU, I think, is a good document. It obligates the county to do our part, obligates them to do their part. And with that, I do see that one of the folks in the audience has something he wants to say. If you're willing to recognize him, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that as well.
You have one minute.
We came in here last week and you said you needed an MOU, sir. We got you an MOU. I look at this as a stone wall. I've been called a blackmailer. We put out well over $100,000 to make this thing happen for Sedgwick County. People at your school can go to that school. We're not trying to keep this school away. We're talking about, we need to close all the roads in Sedgwick County so concrete trucks can't go on them?
No.
Do you not realize how many concrete trucks go down 143rd and it's not tore all to hell? Excuse my line. But it's all there. And people keep on doing, this building that we're talking about is no more than a residential home with two offices in it or two schools, I mean, for them to be able to do this. This is not a schoolhouse construction that you've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of trucks coming in and out with heavy stuff. This is nothing more than a residential home. So we're concerned about this right here. How many developments have you put in or okayed for to put in and put streets in for residential homes on and then it turns around and they build houses in there? Sure, there's going to be faults every now and then, but the cost that you're paying for this road today, to go in and fix it for $2,000 or $3,000 is still going to be cheaper to fix it that way than it will be to not put it in right now. Sure, okay, you might have to go back in and fix the berm or something, but it's going to be cheaper than you're going to pay for another road at another time. And chances are, before they get to that thing, we'll have the foundation in that school. But we need some help here to get this project underway or we're going to have to push them out and not even get it done in time. We need to get this construction started. And once this is started, I mean, I don't know how fast your crews are going to put that asphalt in, but we can get after it. And you'll have the heavy stuff done before it's even laid down on their schedule. But we got to get this moving. We need your help. I mean, I don't want this moving target. I can't hit a moving target. I mean, we want an MOU. We've got an MOU for you, sir. Let's move on this thing. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Ranzau?
I'm very sympathetic to what he just said. He absolutely, my colleague said they needed an MOU to protect the investment of the county and they got it. And he's right, there is a moving target. I mean, one of my colleagues has been trying to kill this project for months. And if they were so worried about tearing up the road, that should have been brought up months ago. It was brought up subsequent to the last meeting as just another roadblock. Perhaps, Commissioner, we need to temporarily reassign this whole area to District One. I suspect you dropped the opposition at that point. This is ridiculous. It's, you've been trying to kill this for months. Okay? You've got people calling Senator Wagle to try and kill this project and calling KDOT to try and kill this project. Somebody was going to call the governor. I don't know if he did. You could ask. To try and kill this project. Don't tell me this is about tearing up the road. It's ridiculous, Commissioner. Stop putting up roadblocks and trying to kill this project. That's what's going on behind the scenes and you know it. Now let's vote on this and let's pass this. This is what needs to happen for this community and stop the behind-the-scenes shenanigans that goes on. It's been going on for a year and a half and longer for a variety of things. This really sickens me, the lengths that people are going to try and kill this project. That's what's happening behind the scenes that nobody knows about. And you're right, roadblock after roadblock after roadblock.
Thank you, Commissioner Ranzau. Well, first of all, what the motion is on is on whether or not we have a CIP amendment. It's not on the MOU. That's the next thing that we're going to be discussing. So all the discussion we're having on the MOU is a little premature at this point because that's not what we're discussing. The second point is that in the future, we're going to be letting other contracts to do roads. This is an emergency that's being made up right now because we've got a contract out there that this can be added to. We're going to have future contracts. We've got 600 miles of road we take care of in Sedgwick County, 600. We're talking about 100. Adding this to a future contract is not a big deal. I have told Commissioner Howell yesterday, I would vote for it if we could delay it. I would approve this. I don't care how that happens, but I can't vote for it and say that we've got a chance of tearing it up now. We've got a good price right now, I agree. But that good price is only valid if we don't have to build the road twice. Because if we tear it up and we have to build it again, it's going to be very expensive. We'll vote for the MOU. I would support putting a road in. I don't support the way we're doing it. That's my whole point I've been trying to make all along. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The arguments on both sides, I think, are valid and important. I know for me, the issue is, I made a commitment a while back to Commissioner Howell that I would support this. And I'm sympathetic to his concerns about the district. I would contest some of the things that was said by Commissioner Ranzau about what was happening behind the scenes, but they weren't directed to me, so that's not my issue. But I will be supporting Commissioner Howell's motion today based on the fact that I made a commitment to him. How long ago was that?
I don't know.
Months ago?
Yeah.
So I am concerned about the road getting beat up during construction, but I'm really backed in a corner on this based on my commitment to Commissioner Howell. So that's why I plan to support his motion.
At this point, if Commissioner Howell wants one more vote, all he has to do is say, hey, we're going to do this in a future CIP amendment and we're going to do it and you're going to get votes for it. Commissioner Howell?
I have one question for Mr. Spears and that is, a while back, we paved a half-mile on 127th Street by Southeast High School. At that time, the contractor, I think, has some type of a warranty that if the road failed in some way for like a year, that they were able to cover the repairs of that road. And there were, in fact, some failures on that road. Didn't, I don't know, they had concrete trucks or whatever went down that road, but there were a few places where the, let's just say, the base under the road may have settled or something, but there were some places that needed to be repaired. All it took was a phone call and the next day, those things were fixed. It didn't seem like it was extremely difficult or expensive, but I believe the contractor took on some responsibility to make sure that road lasted at least a certain while with normal traffic. Can you please confirm that that's true?
Under all of our contracts, all of our contractors with roads, there's a one-year warranty on the road for normal wear and tear. If there's abnormal wear and tear, there would be a negotiation about that because they would not come back and replace a whole road. You know, if there's just small places that happened due to something possibly that they did or it could be under normal wear and tear, most of them will come back. They're all a little bit different in their attitude, but most of them will come back within that year and fix it.
Do we have that warranty on this contract this year?
Yes, we do.
And for roads that have gone beyond that one year that have failed, for example, you fixed a couple of places on 143rd Street just this spring or just in the last couple of months. I assume that was done by county crew. They went out there and made a repair. Is that true?
That's county crew because the base of that's coal mix.
Sure. And can you just, off the top of your head, can you tell me, how much effort was that? How expensive or difficult were those two repairs?
Well, it depends on the size of them. And as you know, there was a couple of them. They're pretty good size.
Say four foot wide by 10 feet long, something like that.
Right, right. And I don't have a number to that because at this point, but...
But it's not hugely expensive. We're talking about $60,000.
No, it's not unusually expensive.
If you had to replace the entire road, it'd be $60,000, right?
It takes people to do it. It takes materials to do it. It takes trucks to do it.
So I guess my point is, if you made a repair to the road, my guess is probably going to be a few thousand dollars, not $60,000.
Correct.
So we're not going to build the road twice. If you have to repair the road, you're not going to replace the entire road. Worst case, it will be another $60,000. We're not going to replace the entire road again. We're going to make a repair if necessary and it's under warranty. We're going to make a repair, if necessary, and it's under warranty. So again, we're talking about, you know, and I don't know that a few thousand dollars with repairs, even on the county's dime, which I don't think is likely to happen, but even if it did happen, is that a reason for us to push this back? I don't think it is. I think this thing is another excuse to, again, someone used the word roadblock, it's an interesting word. That's what this is. Unfortunately, it's political, and it should not be. I feel sorry for those involved, those parties involved. I'm afraid that we are offending our small business owners. We're making statements that, in my opinion, are disrespectful. It's as if we don't believe or trust the things that they say. At the end of the day, I want this school in Sedgwick County, and I think that this is not a huge expense. We need to move forward. If we don't do it, it's not going to happen here, it's going to happen elsewhere, and that's the truth. That's the truth. This idea that we're going to damage this road and have to replace it or build it twice is a ridiculous argument. I don't think it's going to be that bad of a road that it can't handle 15 concrete trucks. And even if it did get damaged, it's not going to be hugely expensive, or if it was damaged, it's under warranty, under normal wear and tear. Mr. Spears, is normal wear and tear included concrete truck going down that road?
Yes.
Okay.
Small amount. But if it's a large amount, that's another story. But they're a legal load, they're allowed to drive on a public road.
And on top of that, we have it in the MOU, that they're going to hire contractors and instruct them they cannot use this paved road to get there. It's in the MOU. We have protections on that as well. This is not a real argument. This is a baseless discussion. It has no, it's not a real reason to push this back. And if we do push this back, it will not be $60,000, it'll be something much higher, and that will cost a lot more than a repair, and it will cost the county more money. So this is not smart. We need to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. One quick question for Mr. Spears. I know we've been putting you on the spot a lot today, and I apologize. Are you going to let any more contracts in the future for roads?
Yes.
Thank you. It is possible that we can include this in a future CIP amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I'm asking, and that's what I asked yesterday, and I thought we had an agreement, but evidently we don't. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Excuse me. Could I get a clarification on the motion?
Yes, sir. It's amend the CIP to include the half-mile road at Cook Airville.
All right. And does that imply it would be done then with this contract immediately? Okay.
Well, are you talking about the MOU?
No, we're not voting on the MOU. We're voting on amending the CIP. That's the only thing we're voting on right now. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
No.
Chairman Dennis?
No. And I only voted no, because I think we could do the same thing at a later CIP. I still support what you're doing out there. I want you all to understand that, okay? Next item that we need to discuss is the MOU that we received, and Mr. Dear, do you have any comments?
Really beyond what I've already explained, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the document or...
Thank you. Mr. Howell, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We've talked this thing to death, and I think it only makes sense we would accept the MOU at this time. I would make a motion we would accept the MOU and authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you. I'll second. Commissioner Ranzau?
I'll second that, and I just want to clarify for the record. When I said there were efforts being made to kill this project, I'm going to say this, and you don't need to say anything unless I should get anything wrong. You have an agreement with KDOT to get a grant award, and there were efforts to try and get that grant repealed or revoked, okay? Not about the road, but there were efforts by this commission to get, or certain members of, or member of this commission to try and get that grant revoked, okay? That's important for the public to know what's going on here.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please. Thank you, Mr. Dear.
New business. Item F, resolution regarding submission of electronic plans.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Chris Labrum, MABCD, as stated, presenting a resolution to amend our Table C of the Unified Building and Trade Code. This specifically relates to the review of commercial building plans. So MABCD does a code review for both the building and the fire code. Sedgwick County Fire is obviously very involved in that process. This is commercial only, does not impact residential. Those are all reviewed as part of the permitting process. We charge a fee that is 60% of the building fee associated with that. That revenue is used to offset not only the cost of the plan review, but much of our permitting and licensing and administrative work associated with those. We purchased the electronic capability, the software, servers, and licensing that went with that in early 2016, so those were budgeted in '15. There were some decision packages and budget increases made at that time. The purchases were made throughout 2016. All of that was MABCD funding, revenue, building revenue-related funding. That total investment came to about $4,500, or, yes, $450,000, excuse me, in that capability. Since then, the program's been in place, so this does not represent any new or additional requirement of investment. In the past year, staff has worked diligently to solidify and streamline our e-plan process, make it what it is now, and make it what it needed to be to properly support our customers with the goal of eliminating the handling of paper. To clarify there, that doesn't change the actual review, whether looking at a computer screen, a TV, or a piece of paper, the plan reviewers have about the same process, but it drastically changes the input transportation, the filing, the storing, and a lot of expense and time that goes with that. Another thing this does for us is facilitate, open the door to some other options and other processes we may be able to implement with our architects and engineering firms, as well as developers, for how their plans are reviewed and how they obtain a permit. So our goal to that also, then, is to implement e-plans as the sole input media for that review. A little bit more on the input transportation process. These are pictures of our reviewers and their office, so you can see that at any given time, the projects that they have in place, have in work, especially with paper, create an extensive amount of movement back and forth to include shipping via UPS and FedEx, the postal service, transporting large amounts of paper back and forth. The picture to the right also depicts how we currently store paper. There are three areas such as this in our building. You can see that the filing and the retrieval there is, while they're dated and tagged, obviously, it's not a super streamlined process. So this would work to reduce, or to eliminate that going forward, and then allow us to reduce and eventually eliminate the plans that we have to keep by inputting them into electronic file storage, into our on-base system. We have worked with our architects, engineers, and our developers throughout this time to get their input. I thank them, as we received a lot of great input from them as to the tweaks we needed to make in the system to make it more usable for them. A lot of the use, obviously, or as one would expect, has come from companies outside of our jurisdiction, doing work for those here. The local companies were more inclined to use paper. But again, we got a lot of great feedback from them on what was either driving them to not want to get the training to use it, or what was frustrating them when they did use it. We did hold some meetings and offered a lot of training courses. That included sending some of our IT folks to their businesses, so that we could see what they were looking at on their own system, and helping them work with that. We've seen our increase through this, or our usage through this increased to 60% and still climbing. Many have waited until we actually mandated it before they have completely used the electronic plans. Stating that we're going to a sole source of electronic input, obviously, does beg the question for those who may want to still use paper. Currently, there are several print shops around town who often print the copies for us. Some businesses utilize that. All of those shops will have access to our software, and several have stated and actually already requested that they receive that training, so that if a architect or engineer wants to still use that method, or to use that method, so that they don't have to go through our website or through our process, they would be able to send it to them for a fee, obviously, but they would input that to us, to our system. It is web-based, does not require an additional software purchase of those businesses using it, a normal operating system. We accept numerous types of files. There's approximately 100 different file types that can be input into the system. The vast majority, 95%, use a PDF format, and there's, while it is a big file, any computer or any system that is already capable of handling the architectural drawings and programs easily handles our file types. So we do not know of or do not foresee any additional expenses or issues there. So specific to the resolution today, it does require electronic submission of all plans. It would establish that as of January 1st of 2019. It does implement an interim 10% upcharge for those who would still bring paper between the publication of this resolution and the 1st of January. That is to recoup our cost, because going forward, we will put all of these into the electronic system at a point in the process, again, to get away from the handling. We're also putting our resources towards improvements with this program, prepping to buy the additional software updates that are coming our way. And that also does define, the resolution defines that MABCD will continue to manage the operating system. We'll have the option to change vendors if we would have a reason to do that, the option to buy updated software, et cetera, but we will continue to train, teach, hold the required forums to ensure that all of our customers are able to use the system, and we support them. So with that, it is our recommendation that VOCC approve the resolution, and I'll gladly stand for questions.
Thank you, Director Labrum. Do I have any questions from any of the commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Chris. When you came to our offices, I had asked a question about how we're matching up with what other major cities, and you're saying we're not behind the train on this, right?
Correct. I would say we're in the middle of the pack, Commissioner. Yes, so...
That every major market is moving towards this.
That is correct, sir. And most, I apologize, but most of what we have seen is the exact same flow that we've had here gets put into place. Some start to use it, that grows slowly, and then, once the jurisdiction says we're going to mandate it, then everyone gets on board and utilizes it.
And we're going to save a lot of trees and a lot of ink, right?
Yes, sir.
And slayer benefits. So, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curious, would you say the majority of the architects and builders out there are supportive of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. What about Wes Gallion and that group?
Yes, and specifically from the WABA, and then noting that this is commercial, so more so of the industry board and some of those. This, again, opens the door for some additional options with their permitting and their review, some things that we may be able to do in the future with certifying them.
I'm glad to know we have their support on this change. But second of all, I'd just like to say, excuse me, we started this process around, I guess, we had a discussion, I'd say, when we finally got into the, or we're moving in towards the Reagan Building. This was actually kind of the first time this came up, and I think that I would like to credit the county commission for encouraging this move. I know at the time, the location of the Reagan Building for the MABCD office wasn't needing to be centrally located primarily, because people had to hand-carry these large rolls of drawings in there, and it was a major part of the discussion as to where that building would be located. And that's all history at this point, but the point I would say is, this thing could be in Tokyo at this point, it wouldn't matter where it is. It could be anywhere. So what I'm saying is, we're embracing technology, we're embracing efficiency, the speed that you can put things into the system, have a conversation over the phone, and then filing these things away. Seeing rooms like that with rooms full of drawings, and have a responsibility to file those away and keep track of all that for a long time, I just think doing this electronically just makes sense. It's efficient and effective, it's faster, it's cleaner, and I think this is a tremendous move for our county. So I'm glad to know that this is happening, and I'm glad to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I don't see anyone else asking questions, but I have one quick one. I know you briefed us thoroughly the other day, and I asked you a bunch of questions. One of them that I didn't ask at that time is, all this stuff is going to be stored electronically somewhere. Do we have good backups for all this in case you lose the primary?
We do. Yes, sir. So the on-base system, we have servers here, it's also backed up through their server system.
Okay, sounds good. That's the only question I had. I forgot to ask that the other day when we met. With that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for electronic submission of plans.
Second.
We have a motion and several seconds. Commissioner O'Donnell is first, for the record.
Yes, sir.
I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item G, presentation of the county manager's 2019 recommended budget.
Commissioners, good morning. Mike Scholes, county manager. It's my pleasure to present to you the 2019 county manager's recommended budget. Our process for this budget started in February, when our leadership team met to talk about our financial condition and the upcoming challenges. We then heard about additional needs from our divisions when they presented their 2019 requests this spring. While we addressed a number of these issues in my last two recommended budgets, like employee pay and compression, pent-up demand in public safety, and process improvements, we know that our environment is constantly changing, and we must adapt. Whether it be new cybersecurity threats, improving technologies available to us to help us do our business, crime trends in our community, an increasing number of citizens with mental health challenges, or changing citizen expectations of government, we continually face pressures to optimize our resources and make every taxpayer dollar go as far as possible. Many of the challenges we've heard about aren't new. Similar needs come from multiple departments and divisions, or have carried forward from the last few budget cycles. It's prompted me to think about how we can do our business here at the county. This budget marks the beginning of a new challenge I put forth to our leadership team to transform our business systems, to optimize our day-to-day operations, and achieve organizational efficiencies. Essentially, I want to transform the framework we use to accomplish our goals. We know our employees are continually working to implement innovative ideals to improve our effectiveness in performing our work, or to save money to ensure we are as efficient as possible, and we see many of these who are recognized at our quarterly recognition ceremonies, many of these employees. As I told you earlier this year, our employees have saved more than $4 million in my first two years with the county by implementing their ideals at division level. We can capitalize on this entrepreneurial spirit by developing an overarching strategy and template that every division or section can use when they are evaluating their process and procedures, trying to solve a problem, or implementing a new program. In doing so, we can position ourselves to achieve our strategic plan objectives in a way that is consistent with our county values, particularly the tenets of community service, accountability, and unimpeachable stewardship of county resources. We need to continue to build on the progress we've made through the creation of the Policy Review Committee, the development of policies and standard operating procedures, establishment of internal controls, and the brand-new Technology Review Board. I'll be working with department and division heads after this budget is adopted to integrate this vision into our day-to-day approach to work as we work towards strategic plans in every division that tie to the county's strategic plan. I'm proud to offer you this budget for consideration. I believe it is a great next step in our implementation of the objectives the organization has identified in our strategic plan. Lindsay will walk you through the details, but I'd like to highlight a few of the items I'm most excited about. The first is continuing to plan for public safety space needs and progression on the new administration building that have been achieved through the proposed 2019-2023 capital improvement program. Two, addressing public safety service needs, including the addition of six additional call-takers to 911, so our citizens have an even quicker response to their calls for emergency services. The addition of an EMS crew to Fire Station 39 to better respond to citizens in western Sedgwick County, and establishment of the expectation that our public safety agencies will use a universal method to track service demand times to help us address issues as soon as they arise. Three, addressing systematic issues in our behavioral health and public safety areas through the addition of two community collaborative positions to work with regional partners. One position, the substance use disorder community... One position, the Substance Use Disorder Community Collaborator, will help us find solutions for this burgeoning, burgeoning substance abuse issue in our community. The other, a Behavioral Health Community Collaborator, will help us address the increasing number and complexity of behavioral health needs in our community. With your support, we hope to accelerate the kickoff for these important programs within the next month or two. Four, improving community health by adding a public health educator position, adding five positions for suburban school district mental health support, and providing continued support for service provider capacity through the Sedgwick County Developmental Disability Organization. Five, we also know that our technology is aging, and we have a need to replace or upgrade our equipment and software. This includes radio replacements, which we propose to do over a three-year timeframe, system security improvements in ITSS, and plan for an updated CAD, our computer aided dispatch and record management system for our public safety colleagues. The state also is making changes and impacting our district court system. Continued efforts to recognize employees in a fiscally responsible and sustainable way with a 2.5% pay adjustment and 1.5% bonus pool to be allocated to exemplary performers. And finally, number seven, flat mill levy rates with the budgets I recommended to you last year for both the county and Fire District at 29.359 for the county budget and 18.371 for the Fire District budget. In summary, the recommended budget you're about to see was created to ensure that your goals were met and the strategic priorities are funded at an appropriate level to achieve our desired result. It is my intent in all budget decisions to preserve the county's sound financial condition. I want to commend all the division heads who participated in this process and all the executive team with Tom Stoltz, Tim Kaufman, David Spears, myself, who participated in this as a budget team. But also, I'd like to thank CFO Lindsay Poverso and her team, the budget team itself, and particularly Budget Director Lori and Shawalter Arie and the Budget Office staff for their hard work in producing this balanced budget. I look forward to working with the commissioners and elected officials over the next month to get the budget adopted. Also, I failed to mention Rusty Leeds as the new Assistant County Manager for Public Safety, coming in just a few months ago and being an integral part of this team to help put this budget together. As an executive team, was, was really instrumental in our success, and I want to thank the whole team for that, as well as the Budget Department for all their hard work, all the division directors. Thank you very much, and without further ado or questions, I'll bring up Lindsay.
I'm little enough to scare. Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Lindsay.
For the record, Lindsay Poverso with Finance. As Mike said, I'll be walking through the details of the recommended budget with you this morning, but I want to follow up and thank my budget folks, led by Lori and Shawalter Arie, but made up of Carly Sanchez, Brandon Mills, Todd Koawa, and Carly San, or Lee McCray, sorry, I was going to say your name twice, Carly, for all their hard work in preparing this nearly 750-page document for you. So with that, we'll get right into the details, and Commissioners, you should have a copy of this presentation at your seats. When we started this process back in February, as Mike said, you did outline a number of principles for us to follow in preparing this budget for you. And so, of course, the very fundamental rule that we've had is to fund this budget with a flat mill levy rate, that 29.359 mills that the Commission set in its target mill levy rate resolution back in 2016. You told us you did not want us to bring you a budget that would trigger an election under the property tax lid. You wanted us to address increased demand for public safety and public services needs, along with the space needs, and of course, we spent considerable time talking about that through the last six months. You wanted a balanced budget, although you did permit us to do some drawdown of fund balance in our special tax funds to reach levels that we proposed were prudent for a county our size and the business activities in those funds. You told us you did not want a substantial reduction of services, and you permitted us to have some strategic moderated use of debt. The county manager also outlined a number of expectations when he set targets for divisions. He told us he wanted us to focus on the priorities within the county's strategic plan. He wanted to address the highest priority needs of elected officials and division heads, in particular, as we've already said, public safety space needs, and also a number of technology demands, which we'll talk through as we go through the presentation. He also wanted us to continue to address employee pay issues, and as he highlighted, there is 4% overall pay pool included in this budget, 2.5% compounding base pay adjustment, and a 1.5% one-time bonus pool for exemplary performers. And finally, as he just talked through, he wants us to focus on proactive and innovative ways to improve organizational effectiveness and efficiency through process review, process improvements, consolidation where possible, training of our partners, and then, of course, collaboration with internal and external partners. So the budget that you'll hear about today totals $439,530,621. That is made up of two parts. Of course, we are two separate entities that are presented in one single budget book. There's Sedgwick County Government, which, as you'll see based on this slide here, our budget has been relatively flat over time in that area. You can see the Fire District budget at $20.5 million, and this proposed budget is a little higher than past years, and we'll walk through why that is as we go into the presentation. So, as we said, of course, we are focused on the county's overall strategic plan, and so how do we spend our money associated with that strategic plan? This slide shows how the budget is broken out across those four priorities. Of course, priority one is safe and secure communities, and you can see that that's nearly 50% of this budget. That includes not just things like the Sheriff Corrections Regional Forensic Science Center, it also includes public works, so the highways, the noxious weeds, things that keep our environment healthy and safe. Category two, or I'm sorry, priority two, is human services and cultural experiences. So that includes things like concare, aging, interest bank arena, expiration place, and those types of entities. Communications and engagement consists of the Strategic Communications Office and the County Manager's Department. It also includes the Elections Office, and so it represents a small section of the budget, but certainly very important to what we do here at the county. And then, priority four is effective government organization. That includes things of what we typically think about in terms of general government, our debt service, payments to WSU, as well as economic development. In terms of how we spend that money, we spend it primarily on our people. Personnel makes up 50% of the budget, and that's not just earnings, that also includes all of the payroll taxes that we pay on behalf of employees for things like retirement or social security. It also includes retirement contributions and any allowances that employees might have. The next largest category is contractual services, so things where we're paying someone to do something for us, and that can range anywhere from external legal counsel to things like our fleet charges. There's a lot of activity that happens in that $159 million. Our next category is debt service. This number that's represented here is not just Sedgwick County's debt service, it also represents the lease purchase payments that the Fire District makes for its larger pieces of equipment, so that's why that number's a little larger than maybe what you might expect to see. Commodities are smaller things, maybe laptops, or the drugs that EMS buys to provide to patients. Capital improvements, of course, are what you'll hear about when we get into our capital improvement plan, as well as some other smaller expenses that may not rise to a level of actually being included in the CIP. Capital outlay is equipment. Those are pieces of equipment that are expensive, so maybe a vehicle or a mass spectrometer at Regional Forensic Science Center. And then the final category is transfers. This isn't necessarily an expense to the county because this is simply moving money around within the budget from fund to fund, but in all, that totals $439.5 million. We fund all of that with at least a good portion from property taxes. About 36% of the overall budget that you'll see here is funded with property taxes between Sedgwick County and Fire District 1. For county government, again, that rate is 29.359 mills, that is consistent with the target resolution that you all passed. The Fire District, as we'll discuss, is at 18.371 mills. That is the rate that the Commission intended to adopt last year, again, after technical adjustment that went up a bit, but this is returning that back to that rate. So when we look at the overall budget in terms of revenues, this recommended budget includes property taxes of about $157 million, again, between Sedgwick County and Fire District 1, so more than a third of the budget is funded in that way. Other taxes, like motor vehicle taxes or sales and use tax, comprise about 12% of the budgeted revenues here. And our governmental revenues include funding we get from the state or the federal government, and that comprises about 11% of the budgeted revenues included here. Charges for service are another 26%. Other sources, like investment income or administrative reimbursement, are shown in the 7% of budgeted revenues. Fund balances, this number is $37 million. That is primarily in the County General Fund, again, for the contingencies that we budget. We don't want to tax our citizens to fund that, but we want to have that budget authority available in case it's necessary for a disaster of some kind. We also have some significant draws on fund balance across some of our internal service funds. For example, our fleet fund has a contingency of 1.5 million. We treat it similarly to the way we do in the General Fund. We also have some additional budget authority in our Health and Life Insurance Fund because we are self-insured, so we want to make sure there's adequate budget to cover any significant events that may come up. And certainly, as we talked with you during the development of this budget, we are intentionally drawing down some fund balance in our workers' compensation fund that is funded with other departmental dollars, and so that actually saves money across the organization by doing that. So, getting into the highlights of this budget, this is, again, a highlight, and for an exhaustive list, you'll want to actually refer to the budget book itself, there's a lot of great information in there. So the first thing we'll talk about is priority one, safe and secure communities, and again, we'll be highlighting changes as compared with the 2018 budget. So the first thing we want to highlight, and Mike talked about it in his presentation, is the addition of a new EMS crew to Fire Station 39. This will allow better response times to Western Sedgwick County, and that is at a cost of just about $600,000, because that does include the addition of an ambulance and some other one-time equipment that we'll need. The second highlight Mike also talked about is the addition of six call-taker positions. This will allow us to achieve industry best practices set by the National Emergency Number Association and the National Fire Protection Association, and over time, we'll continue to monitor that data and make sure that those citizens are getting the best response time possible. Within MABCD, there are the addition of two positions, a plumbing inspector and a mechanical inspector. Those positions have been served essentially through temporary and loner positions. There is a need to add these positions permanently to the staffing table to allow them to keep up with the workload, and so that's what this action would do. Within the District Attorney's budget, you heard during his budget review in May, some of the statistics he had about the number of criminal cases, how those are increasing, not just the number, but the severity and the complexity of those. And so this adds two positions to his department to better meet that demand. And finally, as Mike talked about, one of the priorities we've heard from Commissioners is the addition of the Substance Use Disorder Community Collaborator position, likely which will be accelerated into this calendar year. That position will act as a community liaison, facilitator, and coordinator for a public, private, and nonprofit multi-agency, multidiscipline approach for substance use disorder treatment and mitigation in the county. This person will participate with community-based and public sector-focused groups, interface with law enforcement, pre-hospital medical care providers, medical care facilities, the Medical Society of Sedgwick County, the KU Medical Center, WSU School of Social Work, substance use disorder treatment providers, behavioral health service providers, the Health Department, aging, and other community resources. The position also will investigate grant funding opportunities for our community. They also will work with first responders to develop self-help initiatives and educate first responders, so a very busy position, and certainly a high priority for the organization and the community. As we've already talked about, space needs have been an ongoing discussion for the last, really, year or so, as we know that both the District Attorney and District Court have an increasing need for space here in this building. So this recommended budget includes a CIP that will include an expansion and renovation at the adult detention facility to create space so that the sheriff's folks here in this building from the second and floors can move out, freeing up space for that district attorney to move in. It also includes an administration building, and we'll talk more about the details when we get to the capital improvement plan section of this, but just as a reminder, we'll need a decision on that within the February to May time period next year. This also includes security improvements for our election facilities, and includes continued preventive maintenance for our facilities and drainage, road, and bridge infrastructure. We do address correctional facility issues like HVAC needs and security cameras, we'll talk more about that. And finally, I said we'd come and talk about why the Fire District budget is up a bit. This is one of the primary drivers, this final bullet. This is, there is budget authority and a Fire District contingency to potentially fund a remodel of Fire Station 31 in Andale, and so this is something that we'll have ongoing discussion about, is currently on the watch list, but it's something that we anticipate potentially doing in 2019. Continuing with priority one, safe and secure communities, we know that just like at home, the costs of doing business are increasing for our public safety folks. And so, as we heard about from Mike, we are doing some radio replacements. The first year of this is in the 2019 recommended budget. There's $767,000 included in this budget for the county that will replace mobile and portable radios at public works, facilities maintenance, DA, emergency management, animal control, and then we also have the Fire District that will have radios replaced. This is another reason for an increase in the Fire District budget. While we do have some cash available in a Fire District Special Equipment Fund, which will fund the bulk of about the $700,000 purchase, we know that there will be some need for additional funding from the Fire District operating budget, and so the contingency for the Fire District includes an additional $250,000, which is also contributing to that overall increase in the Fire budget. We also know from the sheriff that his contracts for inmate meals and inmate medical include increases each year, and so this budget provides additional budget authority to accommodate that. We also heard from the District Court that just like in the DA, where there is an increase in the number of criminal cases overall, we also have an increased number of indigent defendants who are in need of an appointed attorney, and so the District Court pays for that. So there's an additional $200,000 to pay for those additional attorneys. Some statistics on that, for example, in two years, criminal cases that are handled by these attorneys increased 31% in just two years. On the traffic side, it increased 46% in only two years, so this additional funding is necessary for that. We also know that as a result of the good work and collaboration between Corrections and the sheriff, we have a new jail annex that's being built that will allow inmates to stay in county rather than being put out of county, which should save money overall, but that does mean that we need to provide increased medical services to that approximate 170 additional inmates that are now going to be in Sedgwick County. And so there is an increase to the medical contract for the jail to provide additional nursing and medication aid services. Finally, Regional Forensic Science Center has aging equipment, and as that aging, or as that equipment gets older, it requires more service, so there are increased costs and an increased budget authority to cover that, as well as cover supply cost increases that they're experiencing. The final slide for priority one, safe and secure communities focuses on the Road and Bridge Capital Improvement Program. As David already referenced earlier today, we do have 600- As David already referenced earlier today, we do have six-hundred miles of roads and approximately six-hundred bridges, and our current preventive maintenance schedule calls for one-hundred miles per year for roads and approximately ten bridges per year. We do have targeted bonding within this recommended budget, as shown in the amounts So shifting gears a bit to Priority Two, Human Services and Cultural Experiences, we do have increases in public services funding. First of all, as we've talked about, and actually you heard an agenda item on related to school mental health, a week or two, to add some additional positions for USC Two-Five-Nine, this would add five additional positions to suburban school districts to provide support for students with behavioral health needs. We also would maintain increased funding for CDDO service provider capacity at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. This had been included as a three-year proposal. In prior year budgets, it was set to expire this year. This continues that funding for CDDO for another three years, with 2019 being the first year of that. There also is increased funding for Aging-in-Home, Community, and Physical Disability Services. This includes programs like Meals on Wheels, adult daycare, home modifications, prescription vouchers, aging legal services, home-delivered groceries. We know that our aging population is getting bigger, and so there is more service need, and so in all, a hundred thousand dollars goes to those services. As we talked about, or as Mike talked about in his opening remarks, there also is the addition of a Behavioral Health Community Collaborator position to this budget. That position, like the other, will be responsible for working with community leaders so that they can work together to address needs of persons, excuse me, with behavioral health needs that are currently overrepresented in emergency rooms, police and sheriff encounters, jails, detention centers, and our frequent users of our community crisis services. This person will be responsible for convening regular meetings of those stakeholders to identify gaps, to facilitate discussions, to research grant opportunities, and to help with the development of a continuum of care. Finally, for this slide, there is the addition of one Public Health Educator position to the Health Department. That position will be largely responsible for tobacco cessation and diabetes management. In 2015, there were five health educators as a part of the health promotion program that were eliminated. This restores one of those. Shifting to Priority Three for Communications and Engagement, there is additional funding for election facility enhancements. There was a report prepared by the Sheriff's Office and Courthouse Police to identify areas of risk for the election office. That report has come back, and we have some idea of what those necessary improvements are. So this budget includes thirty-five thousand in 2019 to do that, and then, as we'll talk about in the Capital Improvement Program, there's a larger pot of funding in 2020 to implement those changes. Shifting gears a bit, there are enhancements planned for the county website in 2019, not necessarily additional cost, but certainly worth highlighting in regards to communication and engagement. We'll be able to add some new features to the website, things that we haven't been able to do before to improve the way we interact with our community members. We'll have some technical changes to improve the way the website performs. And finally, there will be some usability improvements, including improvements for disabled users, and also we'll polish the way the website looks. Shifting to our final priority, Effective Government Organization, as we already talked about, there are, there's an overall four percent pay pool included in this 2019 recommended budget. Again, two-and-a-half percent of that is for general pay adjustment that would go into effect January one. That is about four-point-one million dollars in all funds when we take into account the total impact on payroll taxes over time and everything. Another one-and-a-half percent is included as a one-time bonus, again, for exemplary performers as a part of the new performance management evaluation system that we have shifted to in the last year. And finally, there is an increase of five percent, or five-point-three percent for employer and employee health insurance premiums. That would have gone up slightly more, but for one change that will be recommended through this process, and that is that we will somewhat narrow our prescription network. By doing so, we're able to get discounted rates with the particular prescription provider, and so more details on that will come out as we go through the process. We also heard much about technology and needed technology improvements, and one of the things that both commissioners and the manager expressed concern about is how that information is coming to you and how it should be routed through our centralized ITSS department. And so going forward, there is a technology improvement process that will be put into place, likely a technology review board that will vet all of that information and make sure that there are standards across the county, and that will be led by our CIO going forward. We also know that the District Court is being told by the state that they'll be going to a new Odyssey system. To do that, they need to upgrade their Microsoft Office to at least 2013, and so there is some funding in this budget to accommodate that upgrade, and hopefully our County Counselors' Office will be able to piggyback on that as well. We also have heard much discussion about the Corrections Database. We know that there's a couple different milestones. There's a good chunk of that funding that's available in 2018, but they need some additional funding to cover that in calendar year 2019, so this budget accommodates that. ITSS also wants to go from a traditional antivirus system to a next-generation antivirus, an endpoint detection and threat response solution, and so this budget includes funding for that. And finally, we know that our financial and HR system will go end-of-support in the mid-2020s. And as we prepare for our advancement to that new system, we want to do some testing to make sure we understand how that's going to work, because it's a much more off-the-shelf system, much less customized than what we've been using. And so this budget would accommodate testing for that, essentially what they call a sandbox for users to test with in advance, and so this budget accommodates that as well. One of the more significant changes in this budget deals with the way we do EMS billing. Back in the 2014 budget process, we thought we could save money by taking the EMS billing that was being done by an external vendor and doing that in-house. And so that effort was made, and as the auditor explained to you a few weeks ago, while we did save some money, we weren't quite making as much as we thought we could. And so this budget proposes to outsource that again, and so that would result in the elimination of seven of the eight positions. Following the auditor's recommendation, we would leave one position on the staffing table now to be housed and financed, to oversee that billing and make sure we're mitigating some of the risk and things that we heard about during that presentation. If the Commission supports this, essentially the day of budget adoption, we would plan to issue an RFP for this service. And as we've heard, there is an intent to take care of those employees who would be impacted by this decision, and so you'll be hearing more about that if this is something the Commission opts to follow through on. Now we'll get to the Capital Improvement Plan. This looks very much like what you saw at your last CIP workshop, so I won't spend a lot of time belaboring all of these points, but this is your 2019 Facility and Drainage Capital Improvement Plan portion. As we've already talked about, the Adult Detention Facility is going to be remodeled and expanded to accommodate office folks. That will cost about five-point-five million dollars, we anticipate, and we would intend to issue bonds to reimburse whatever those costs are at the end of next calendar year. It also includes funding for the Juvenile Detention Facility Security Camera System. We would modernize elevators at the jail to prevent any issues that could happen in an emergency. We would replace the salt storage building at the West Yard, or I'm sorry, make improvements to it. There is additional funding to continue on the track of complying with our ADA Transition Plan. There is funding for the outdoor warning device installation and replacement, as well as some computers that operate that system. And finally, the Wichita Valley Center of Flood Control Project, this portion is for the capital improvement money that we give to the city that basically administers that program, so that five-hundred thousand dollars is included. In total, this is seven-million-four-hundred-eighty-one-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-one dollars, and you can see how that's broken out between cash and bond. Looking at roads only, then, this is the county portion of funding. This is funded entirely with cash in next year's budget. You can see that the bulk of this goes to preventive maintenance. The rest is spread across the projects listed here that David had talked with you about during the CIP workshop, and I'll be happy to defer to David on any questions about the specifics of this. You're welcome. Going to bridges for the county portion, these are the bridges that would have work done on them in next calendar year. You'll see the top four involve some component of construction. The rest include design or right-of-way acquisition. In total, this is six-million-fifty-thousand, of which about two-million-fifty-thousand would come from cash, the remainder to come from bond. And I will also be happy to turn it over to David if you have any questions about these. So in summary, for the county portion for 2019, you'll see that facility and drainage equals about seven-point-five million, as we discussed. Roads are about nine-point-eight. Bridges are about six. So in total, the county portion dedicated to CIP in the 2019 recommended budget would be twenty-three-million-two-hundred-eighty-six-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-one dollars. I'll point you, though, to that asterisk portion, because as any good finance person would do, of course, we always have caveats. The overall program does include some funding from external partners, and so the total CIP that you'll actually see in the book is twenty-five-million-eight-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-one dollars, and that's primarily for revenues we expect to receive, or at least be funded with dollars from KDOT or Federal Highway Funds. So looking at the final four years of the Capital Improvement Plan, just some highlights, we do have the administrative building and main courthouse remodel. The portion that is reflected in the CIP for the administration building is just for the portion we would bond. We do continue to plan to reserve three million dollars from your action earlier this year to put toward that administrative building, and we would take action later this year to actually move that cash from the General Fund to that project to accommodate that. As we talked about, there are additional building improvements. There's five-hundred thousand dollars in this CIP in calendar year 2020 to address some of the more significant needs associated with that review that was done by our law enforcement partners. We also have the replacement of EMS Post One. There are some correctional facility HVAC replacements and improvements, various park projects, as we had discussed, continued investment in the Wichita Valley Center of Flood Control Project at five-hundred thousand per year, and then strategic bonding of certain facility projects. Again, that is all outlined in your Capital Improvement Plan within your book, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that when we get to the end of the presentation. For roads and bridges, we continue on the track to work on one-hundred miles per year for roads and ten bridges per year for that work. And then finally, there is, as we already talked about, some strategic bonding around four million dollars per year in two of the four outer years of this CIP. In total, those final four years represent ninety-six-point-six million dollars of the county portion of funding. The overall plan is one-hundred-five-point-three million dollars in those four years, of which about eight-point-seven million dollars is intended to come from our outside partners. So when we look at all five years together, we have a total county portion supporting our Capital Improvement Plan of one-hundred-nineteen-million-nine-hundred-one-thousand-five-hundred-eighty-five So we've talked about the budget. Of course, the budget is a plan, and it's a spending limit. So what does this look like in terms of what we really expect to happen when this budget and this Capital Improvement Plan is adopted? So you're used to seeing this operating income chart. What this does is represents what we expect to really happen with our revenues and our expenses and our eight county property tax-supported funds, so this is cumulative operating income or deficit. I am very pleased to show you that in 2019, we actually have an overall surplus of about one-hundred thousand dollars projected, even with some of that strategic drawdown in some of those tax funds that we talked about. You can see that in 2020, we do have some deficit projected, but again, we have some significant facility projects. We also have the CAD and RMS system replacement for our sheriff, nine-one-one, and those partners in that year, and so actually, overall, while there is a deficit projected there, it's certainly not bad news from my perspective. And then you can see that in the outer years of the forecast, we have surpluses projected in all years. Now, I'll tie that back, of course, to the fact that we're in the early years yet. We do know that there's going to be this more proactive and innovative way that we look at doing budgets going forward, and so this will be some additional workshops and things that we'll need to do with commissioners to make sure that we're planning for the growth in our community and growth in our services that are necessary to provide, and so we'll have continued discussion about that. But certainly, in this recommended budget, this is a very good story to see. Again, because we have focused on the General Fund, because you have allowed us to do some targeted drawdowns in our other funds, this is kind of, this slide represents the bottom line for our County General Fund. Again, we do require that we, our policy requires that we keep at least twenty percent of budgeted expenditures reserved in our General Fund and unspent. And so this black line that you'll see on each of these bars represents that minimum amount. And so not only are we not falling below, or not only are we not having many deficits, we're not ever falling below that level. And so this bottom table that you'll see across the bottom of this chart shows how much either surplus, as shown in black, or deficit, as shown in red, we project in the General Fund per year based on what we currently expect to happen and what's included in this recommended budget. So again, a very good story for us. In summary, the county government budget that you'll be asked to consider is four-hundred-nineteen-million-fourty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-three dollars. It funds two-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-four-point-three-seven FTEs, and again, it has a flat property tax rate of twenty-nine-point-three-five-nine mils, estimated, of course, before technical adjustment that could occur in November. For the Fire District, the budget is twenty-million-four-hundred-eighty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-eight dollars. It funds one-hundred-fifty-three-point-five FTEs at an estimated tax rate of eighteen-point-three-seven-one mils. So overall, we have a total budget of four-hundred-thirty-nine-million-five-hundred-thirty-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-one dollars, about three-thousand-fifty total FTEs between our two budgets. And certainly, this is something to be commended for divisions as they put together their budgets. They were challenged to do flat budget targets, and this is noteworthy, because you may recall that we did across-the-board reductions for the 2012 budget, and really, ever since, departments have been asked to live within a flat budget with some periodic adjustments for decision packages or specific needs. It's one thing to ask departments to live within flat budget targets for a year or two, but certainly, they have shown their creativity, innovation, and efficiency over the last several years to work to get a budget like this. So with that, I'm more than happy to take any questions or defer them to the appropriate parties. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file.
Thank you, Lindsay. Very thorough briefing. One other date, you're going to brief my Citizens Advisory Board on August sixth also.
Absolutely, and I'm sorry, I did forget the remaining key dates. So that is, we'll throw that in here that's not listed, but we do have an online budget hearing that will start today. We have last day update, last update also today, in which we'll put that publication out next week, and Lauren will do that briefing for you. We have a number of opportunities for folks to get involved. First, public hearing next Wednesday, then a social media town hall Thursday the second, and then the final budget hearing on Thursday, August ninth, before hopefully you all adopt that budget on August fifteenth, and I know you've got a trip to take, so I think we can make sure that happens.
Questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lindsay, thank you. It's a big effort, a good effort. Thank you for the presentation. Back on Slide fourteen, I had a couple of questions. First, the Behavioral Health Community Collaborator for Calm Care, potentially in 2018. We're setting aside resources for that, but how is that? I've been advised that Via Christie had a grant, perhaps, that maybe they could help kick this off. We're going to work in collaboration with them, so we use our resources effectively.
Well, and I believe Mike can probably address this, but if there's support for this from the Commission, then we would plan to bring an action to you the day you adopt the budget on the consent agenda to approve. the budget on the consent agenda to approve the creation of this position, and we would fund that this calendar year with whatever dollars we have, and if there are no county dollars, we will figure out a way to fund that. Or I'm sorry, no grant dollars, we'll figure out a way to fund that.
We've identified the two positions, and we would propose on the 15th to bring that to the commission for approval.
Okay.
And there are two vacant positions right now within the organization. We're living within, we're not growing, maintaining the flat nature of our budget.
Okay. Well, I think it's an important, actually, a new initiative to try to deal with this issue in our community, and I'm pleased to see that it's included. I had also a question about maintain increased funding for CDDO service provider capacity. Is there any more specifics on that? I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, does that include support for transportation services?
It does not provide funding for transportation services. From the grants that have been given from CDDO in the last few years that this program has operated, it's done things like increase day program capacity or those types of things, but not toward transportation specifically, no.
All right, well, I would like to request that the manager and your budget staff look into the possibility of us adding $250,000 for transportation services for CDDO community I think this is a really important thing to do, and it would be a gap financing. This service had been provided, I believe, through the city's capability, whether they did it with grant funding or whatever, I don't know, but a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, they ceased funding transportation for people with, that have severe intellectual and developmental disability issues in their life. Just as a couple of quick background pieces, I think that there's an estimate, from the U.S. Census data and the prevalence in, of CDDO folks in those communities, it's estimated that there's 50,000 persons in Sedgwick County who are dependent on public transportation. And this transportation allows people who otherwise just don't have the ability to get to jobs or to education or to medical services or to school, to training, to those sort of things. And it's, it's a big number, and a lot of those folks can access the current fixed transit routes. However, there's a, there's a large group of folks in our community who have been dependent on transit services, and they, they have more specialized needs. They have cognitive limitations, they have behavioral concerns, specific medical needs, and you know, all these could be described in greater detail, but it's been estimated from our research that we've got nearly 2,500 people in our community with this more severe need to have transportation, and so they need specialized transportation. And the city, as I said, was not able to continue the funding, but in, at a meeting at the ARC of Sedgwick County, I was in attendance, and another commissioner was there. I don't, was it Commissioner O'Donnell was there, along with the mayor of the city of Wichita and three other council people, and they indicated quite publicly that they intended to have the resources to reinstate this service in 2020. So for 2019, they're already in a gap situation, but for our 2019 budget, I would like for us to provide the resources to provide this specialized funding. The agencies, people that serve the developmentally disabled in our community, there's a lot of different groups, and they all have great cooperation and coordination. They share each other's concerns, they work together. And the room that we were in where the mayor made a commitment for 2020 was full of different service providers who all were unanimous in their request that something needs to be done for this population now. Well, we can't do it now, but maybe we can include it in our 2019 budget. But there's a pretty good number, 17% or better of these individuals who live outside the limits of the city of Wichita. So this specialized transportation becomes even more important for those individuals just to be able to get to the doctor or get to the job or do the things that are, that we just don't even think about, to have a normal productive life in our, in our community. The impact that's been estimated for the primary CDDO providers was as much as 1.2 million per year in order to provide these services. And the primary people, so you know who the primary service providers are, is Catholic Charities, CPRF, Civil Policy Research Foundation, Invision, Catch, and Starkey Services. And through our CDO, if, if it was, if you guys in the budget can figure out how to do it with a manager, and if there's commission support through our CDDO organization, we could find someone to manage this. We don't have to hire people, we don't have to set up a structure, but we can just provide the resources so these folks can, can get around, and it doesn't break the service providers on the one hand, and it doesn't put undue financial strain on the individuals. And our CDO, CDDO, Community Developmental Disabilities Organization, they, this is what they do. This is, you know, we, we help these folks, and for $250,000, we can bridge the gap for a year and provide this specialized transportation. So that's my whole speech here, and I just, I hope that commissioners will be sympathetic to this need in our community, and I hope that you all can wring out the budget a little bit to find those resources. So that's one thing.
All right.
Shall I do the second thing?
Please.
Okay. My second thing that I think is important, as you know, we have a youth employment program through Workforce Alliance in our community, and this youth employment program has been really effective. They think perhaps this year that they'll put 500 young people to work, and they have federal funds to help run this program, but they're, they are always lacking in financial support. And we're aware of this. I said on the chief elected officials board, as does Commissioner Howell said on the chief elected officials board, we know how important these youth employment programs are to our community, not only to the individuals, but also to the businesses where they work, and it also says a lot about, you know, our willingness to work together to try to get young people jobs, keep them in our community, and, and it has a lot to do with quality of life for our citizens. It's been, it's been advanced to me that if we could provide $25,000 to help these people in the promotion of this, to their pre-testing, to their, to their learning job skills before they get to the work site, that the individuals are better prepared and the companies get a better product. And so my suggestion is, I, what would be a good thing is if we would commit $25,000 out of our economic development fund or something, on, on kind of a challenge basis, that the city of Wichita matched that, they would have $50,000 in which to run this program. And once again, it'd have to be annually approved or whatever, and if the city can only put in 10, well, then that's what we'll put in. I mean, I, I don't think we need to carry the whole burden for it, but as someone on the chief elected officials board, I think this is an important program, and we should try to be as supportive as we can. So my request is that you set aside 25 grand on sort of a challenge basis for the city of Wichita, and if you can see if that's possible, and see if there's support from the commission before we approve budget. Those are my requests.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else, but I do have some questions myself then, since no one else is going to speak. First of all, on Slide 10, the Substance Abuse Disorder Community Collaborator position, you've got it down, is that a, are we paying 92,000? I thought that was coming out of the sheriff's budget in a position that already exists.
The position that existed was held, so there was no funding for it. This is the total estimated cost for the position, including benefits. We do know that the Wichita Crime Commission has dedicated some funding toward it, and so we would have some revenue to offset this budgeted amount, but this is what's included in the budget for this position.
Okay, well, I wholeheartedly support this position. I think it is critical to our community that, that we do this position, but I thought we were just converting one position in the sheriff's office.
We did have an FTE, but it was a held position, and so that essentially meant there was no funding tied to it, so we're not having to grow the staffing table, but we do need to add the budget authority to allow for that payment.
Okay, let's see. On Slide number 14, again, a lot of these are comments. The first thing, add five positions to support students with behavioral health in suburban schools. I think that's great because we're putting, I don't remember, 22 or something like, no more than that.
Yeah, about 55, I think, or 57, based off the new grant.
We're supporting like 22 schools with 50 or 60 people in Wichita from a grant, not a grant, an actual vote that was made by our legislature to add those positions. I think it's great that we're also looking at our suburban schools, but from what I understand, the law that was passed, it will then, if they see that it's going well with the first year, the second year, it's going to take care of all of the schools in Sedgwick County. So is this a one-year proposal, since it should be picked up by the law the following years?
We, we would, at this point, we have included it as an ongoing expense if the legislature does not expand that program beyond the pilot program, but certainly, we can come back and reevaluate that if that's what the commission would like to do.
If they don't extend it, we're not going to be able to pay the money that's going into USD 259. We can't continue that one.
I think for, for these five positions at least, these are revenue generating because we are able to bill a private insurer or Medicaid for these services, and so we do anticipate that there will be enough revenue to support these through that route. And then, yes, for the other 55 positions that are funded through the state grant, we certainly would need to reexamine what to do if that state grant goes away.
Okay, well, we just need to keep track of that, because if it's picked up by the, by the law, we don't need to continue with that in our budget following years. I agree with it. I don't have a problem with it. The next one, same slide. Again, I wholeheartedly agree with the Health Communicator, Community Collaborator position in Calm Care. It's really a position that's in conjunction with the one that I spoke about previously on the drug abuse portion of it. So these two positions need to go hand in hand. We need to hire these two positions sooner rather than later, so I'm hoping, I talked to Tim the other day and told him that this is something that we need to move forward with. We need to talk to our HR people. They need to be staffed together, even though they're going to have two separate jobs. We need to keep them together because they need to work collaboratively between those two organizations. So I know that they've kind of got different areas, but those two areas are so interrelated that they have to work together. We can't have one of them going one way and one of them going another way.
As we indicated earlier, we will bring that to the August 15th meeting for you to approve.
I know that we're doing the 1.5% bonus pool. I'd just like, at some point in the future, feedback on whether that's working or not. I need to know what the outcome of that is. Is it doing what we want it to do to motivate employees to try and get into that pool? Or are we spending 2.4 million dollars a year and it's not doing what we want to do? I just need feedback on whether that's working.
And that would be next year after we awarded it, and we'd get you some feedback on how it's done next year.
Okay. As far as Commissioner Unruh's two requests, the quarter million dollars for CDDO, I strongly agree that 17% outside of the city of Wichita, we need to support. My question is, and I need clarification before I vote for this, is what is Wichita's legal requirement? They get federal funding to do busing. Are we taking over some of the requirements that Wichita is required to do legally? If that's the case, I don't support that portion of it, as again, I support anything outside of the city of Wichita, and if we need to support the 17% that are outside, I wholeheartedly do that, and I possibly can support the other portion of it, but I need to know what Wichita's legal responsibility is on this thing. I'm not going to take over their legal responsibilities in this case. Also, on the second one, on the youth employment program, as long as we match that with the city of Wichita, and again, we don't go it by ourselves, I don't have any problem with that, so.
On that note, Commissioner, we need to get some clarification because, you know, the city manager yesterday in his recommended budget had mentioned that he was going to consolidate his ECODEVO program and what he spends, so we'll get some clarification on what he's intending to do with that, and then how this would affect if they would truly go in partnership with us on that.
Good. Any other questions for Lindsay? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to commend the manager and all the finance staff, the CFO, for all, oh, a job well done, bringing this to us. It's a lot of work. I think I saw like 740 pages in this book, and so it's a lot of work you all did, and I want to say thank you for a job well done. I do have a few, a few questions, though. I'm curious, the, the Health Educator position, is this the same position, the same thing we, we reduced that in 2015? This is a grant funded at that time?
There was, I believe, one locally funded position at the time, one general funded position that was also eliminated at the time, and I don't know exactly which position, what the duties were from that property tax funded position. Tim, do you remember? Could you speak to that at all?
Commissioners, Tim Kaufman, for the record. The duties are slightly, the anticipated duties are slightly different. In the past, we had worked more on policy-level tobacco issues. This is direct cessation training, and then diabetes training, diabetes management services and training are the proposed services for this new position. The, the health environment changes on a regular basis, and right now, the greatest need in the community from Adrienne and her partner's perspective is in tobacco cessation services and in diabetes management services, and so that would be the focus of this position were it to be added.
And you say training, is that training for whom? How do you connect to people who need training? Is this for businesses or for?
It would be for individuals. I may have misspoke. This is actually direct service, diabetes management, direct services, and tobacco cessation, direct services.
Well, there was, there was a grant in 2015 that I think that we, we did not accept, that it was a smoking cessation grant that went to the private sector. So they, the private sector picked up that grant, and they hired this, I think, the same staff. Is that not still going on?
That is still going on, but again, that was focused on systems issues, not in, not at the individual level, and so they worked with organizations, companies, apartment complexes to develop smoke-free apartment rules and regulations, that sort of thing. So the services that were funded in that particular grant were at the system, were delivered at the system level, and the need that we have identified and that we are requesting funding for in 2019 is at the individual level.
Okay. I have a couple of other questions. Thank you for the answers to that. On Slide 21, there's a R352 for, $150,000 for 127th Street East. Is that, are we, are we committing? I mean, is it, I thought, I, I talked to Chairman yesterday, I thought that was not being done. Is that off, is that something that we're supporting or is it, we're not supporting?
David Spears, Assistant County Manager of Public Works. There's been some changes that we're working on right now, and it looks, I'm going to say right now, it's looking like we are not going to have to spend that money. There's, this is sort of a fluid thing going, and we're going to come back with an agreement at some point between all the parties as to what's going to happen, but, but that's, I'm sorry, this is, has just developed, so Lindsay and manager probably don't, don't know about this, but, and it's not a definite thing, but it looks like that's going to be eliminated. That's what we're working on.
Okay, that's, that's a good answer. Thank you for that. And then I'm curious about the 1.75. And then, I'm curious about the 1.75 million for Andale Fire Station. Is that more of a traditional cost to construct a fire station?
Yes, sir, that's what we did, is we looked at historical numbers.
So we'll probably expect that number to go down because we're going to probably come up with a different design, I would hope.
Correct. We're going to mirror what we did in the northeast EMS station and look for a new design that would lower that cost.
Okay, very good. And then, I don't know if I saw it anywhere, but I was hoping to see an enhancement for senior center funding of about $25,000 in here somewhere. Is that in the budget?
That is not included in this.
It's not included in the budget, okay. Well, I would advocate to my colleagues that we need to have that discussion. I would like to see an addition of $25,000 for five senior centers. That's Bel Air, Clearwater, Hayesville, Oaklawn, and Mulvane, $5,000 each. I can get into the reasons as to why I want that, but I'll be requesting that in the future. I'll talk to staff and the rest of you all to explain my rationale for that, but I would like to see that enhancement. What about transportation subsidy for the Oaklawn community?
That continues to be within this budget.
It is in the budget, all right. All right, that's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for Lindsey? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Just to piggyback on what Commissioner Howell talked about, Lindsey and I had talked earlier this week about that senior center additional funding, and I feel confident we'll have the support and you'll have the motion ready for us that day of budget. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? As far as senior centers, we have a screwed-up way of deciding who gets what, and we have a screwed-up way of deciding how much everybody gets, and we've been talking about this for a year and a half, and we still haven't come up with a solution. We have seniors all over the county. I would say that probably, on my estimate, which is not scientific, that one-fifth of all the seniors live in each one of our districts. That would probably be a pretty good guess, and yet, we funnel the majority of the funding into two districts. Doesn't make sense to me, so...
I wasn't counting on your vote.
You weren't counting on my vote? So until we can finally come up with a solution on what we do with senior centers, I'm probably not going to vote for it, so Commissioner O'Donnell is very perceptive.
You are not part of my three.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, it's about time for a break. I think we need a motion to receive and file this portion of it.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
We'll take a 10-minute break. That puts us back here at about 44, I guess. Thank you.
Target. Yeah. 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 Target.